Okay, I think the mics are on. We don't have a picture in front of us yet, but there we go. Let's call this meeting back to order. The next orders of business are the mayor and council member items, I think, right?
Public comment.
Yeah. Agenda says mayor and council items before public comments, so. The first item on here is Mayor Nelson's item, appointing a chair to this LPA. And I believe the resolution reflects the name of his recommendation. Does somebody want to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Deputy Mayor Spear.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilwoman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakda.
Aye.
Okay, second item, approve a resolution, appointing a chair to the zoning board. Again, Mayor Nelson's recommendation is in the backup.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakda.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Spear.
Aye. Okay, general comments that are not on the agenda. Bill, can we start in to the left?
You can. By the way, John, you're doing well.
(laughing) I appreciate that.
Well, it's...
When's your last meeting?
Next one.
I do have something, something that I've worked on for a couple of years, and I don't like to point at myself, but I will in this particular case. A couple of years ago, Hunter's Ridge Country Club came to me in reference to their situation with the wall, sound wall on I-75. And the person that headed it up was Mr. Fred Forbes. And he asked me if I could move that along in terms of contacting people at the state level to see if there was a possibility of getting that wall. And over the past two years, Fred and his committee, we met with Senator Benequisto, and we met with, in that meeting was also Johnny Limbaugh from the county and a state DOT person. And they saw a magnificent PowerPoint presentation of why Hunter's Ridge should have a wall. The MPO, Lee County MPO, is meeting Friday to discuss it, and I'm hoping that they will say yes to it, and the wall would be built this year for Hunter's Ridge. The point I want to make is that the spirit of cooperation between all levels of government shows that it does work, and I think overall, in the entire city here in Benita Springs, with all these council people that I work with, we tend to get things done over a period of time, and it's a credit to the staff here, especially here at the local level. And I certainly appreciate the cooperation that I receive from the people and the other entities. Thank you.
Bill, in that regard, I appreciate your efforts and Fred's efforts. I'm not sure this is appropriate or not, but I would entertain a motion, and I suspect the council will accept the motion, that the two city MPO representatives vote accordingly.
Yes.
All seven of us might as well be on record on this.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
Well...
Okay, Janet.
Thank you. A lot of traditional homes that along I-75 also that are in my district, we would just love, I'm sure, to be piggybacked on any request for any kind of the sound wall. And I know Fred has been gracious in working with those homeowners, and I just hope that those homes would be recognized and remembered also. You know, just because they'll never meet the density requirements, they certainly meet the distance, but because of the, you know, Benita Springs Utilities properties and FPL power lines, there'll never be a density that they'll ever meet there. So those single-family homes that are right there along I-75, I just hope they're not forgotten. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? I think, in talking to Fred, I think, and Bill, you were at the presentations, I think Fred's presentations were primarily to show that those criteria are more often not met than met when it comes to those walls.
Exactly.
So in spite of what we'd been told over the last couple of years, the FDOT decisions are more political and less technical than we were led to believe, I think. And I believe Fred's available to help.
That's right.
Just about any neighborhood that wants to, so.
And he's been very good.
Yeah, so I think that, you know, I think we can continue chipping away at that, so.
John.
Yes.
Yeah, just as a parliamentary point of order, usually, no, it's okay. I'm going to support this motion, because in the past, we've showed our support to this community for moving forward with this wall.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, if anybody raises a point here that it wasn't on the agenda or anything like that, I think it's just a reiteration of our support for that community, for that wall.
Well, and I think, given the fact that the MPO meeting is on Friday, is sufficient reason to not put it off till the next meeting.
Absolutely.
So.
Thank you, John.
With that said, roll call, please.
Councilman Longheart.
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh.
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin.
Aye.
Councilman Slakda.
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Spear.
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I got my marching orders. Okay, anything else, Bill? Nothing? Thank you. Martha?
Thank you. I was reading in the minutes, which we'll approve sometime later, that Ms. Fresin, if I say her name correctly, was mentioning prohibiting chumming of shark on Benita Beach, and this might be dangerous, and sharks are in decline, and, you know, it might be important that we do something about this. What are our legal, sharks are important to the food chain in the Gulf, by the way, like quick fishing them out. Anyhow, but what are the legal implications for doing something like that? Are there any?
Absolutely. This one, and I've prepared a memorandum in the past, so if you watch Councilman Slakda nodding his head, there is a memorandum, and I can dust it off. It has the famous little shark bullets that I don't know if the new computer system will provide, but basically, sum and substance, the Florida Constitution prohibits local governments from adopting ordinances relating to fishing. That's one of the preemptive areas that's reserved to Fish and Wildlife Commission. Now, with that being said, this past year or two has been a very hot issue for certain species of sharks with new prohibitions on that. But it is not something that the city has authority to do on public beaches.
So you couldn't say, oh, yeah, you're allowed to do that, but over there?
You would probably, if you felt that there was a special area that you would want the sharks to be at, as opposed, where you'd want people to shark fish, it would have to go through Fish and Wildlife Commission. But with that being said, sharks don't read ordinances very well.
I know that.
So.
Well, yes, but...
If they're going to be in the water, they're going to be in the water.
You know, splashing around bloody stuff in the water where there are bathers.
Sure.
Could be quite a dangerous public...
Absolutely, and I think it's a two-mile range, is what they, you know, what I've heard from the fishery folks. But I have a whole file on it, I'll be happy to share it with you.
Well, I don't know if council wants to check into that. I mean, if we do apply to Fish and Wildlife, what's the key to success, or is there success in that regard?
There are, right, I have to think about, I'm thinking seashells, because the Tourist Development Council did that with live shelling originally, San Diego, and then it moved on to Lee County. You could lobby to regulate shark fishing, say, on Little Hickory Island, Lever's Key, if that was something that you wanted to prohibit throughout that entire area. It's something I can look into if council is interested.
Well, I would be interested in looking into that, especially with what's happening to the shark populations. But also, what's happening to, could potentially be a danger for, you know, the bathers out there. I mean, we have a lot of people coming to the beach, swimming around, and yet putting bloody stuff in the water for shark, they might mistake a leg for something.
Good, alright.
Yeah, okay. I don't want to get down on fishermen, that's a great...
I'll be happy to bring something back.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Sounds like that's a request to put something on a future agenda.
Well, that would be, yeah, that would, sorry. See where council wants to go with that later. I had the pleasure of presenting the preliminary ideas from our Public Works Department on the solution to, or the progressive solution to the Imperial Harbor flooding issue. And, you know, before John gets off council, I don't know, Carl, if we, I know you've said that you feel that you have council approval, you know, to move forward with funding or something like that, but I just want to get a sense, maybe at the next meeting, Daryl told me that by the end of this week, we'd probably have a greater sense of what exactly the engineering's going to look like for those pipes going down to the pond and all that. All of the design work should probably be figured out, all the modeling will be done. So I'm wondering if at the next meeting, and maybe you can speak to this, Carl, we could put something on there for the funding. Know what I mean, John?
She's talking to you, Carl.
Yes, sir. Looking for recognition from the mayor, sir. Yes, in response, what I've said is that I feel that staff has direction to look at the options here, which we've been doing, takes a little bit of engineering, and to bring back a number for the council. I know that the number of $150,000 was thrown around at a prior meeting. We don't know that that's the number, high or low, but we are committed to looking for a solution that is reasonably priced and will work, and that's what we'd like to bring back to council, is both the proposed solution as well as a number that we think will work.
Well, and if we, if we're not there by the next meeting, I certainly understand that, but I would like to have some iteration by this council, that they're willing to move forward, you know, with the project, because we also don't know, at the end of this legislative session, what the governor's going to do with signing bills, because last year, the money got slashed for the ponds over there. I'd like to see that as, hopefully, a total project before rainy season commences, so that, you know, we can get it right and do it all in a progressive manner. Pipe, pond, da-da-da-da, swale, you know, weir, whatever, whatever it is we need to do with that. Thanks, guys. Y'all are hearing me. Next, real quick, I got to canvass the absentee ballots. I didn't get to see what the heck they were, as your representative on our city election canvassing board, I don't know who voted for what, but we have really smart voters who follow directions in the city. I'm proud of you. We just missed, like, maybe three or four people who didn't sign their name on the back of their absentee ballot certification envelope. So that's a really good rate. And follow the instructions if you're sending in your stuff, but well done, folks. Referendum. Okay, we sent that slot machine referendum to the Board of County Commissioners, it's coming up on January 24th. Are we going to be sending representatives, council there? Are we encouraging us to go? What's going on with that?
I know that the city attorney and I plan to be there. We're not sure about council's support at this point, whatever council's pleasure is.
Okay, well, do we need to appoint somebody, or we just go, or somebody's going to speak on behalf of the city?
I don't know whether the mayor, I suspect the mayor was planning on going, but I don't know.
I can check with the mayor.
Okay, well, I plan on going, so.
And I don't think there's any...
I'm not planning on speaking. If the mayor's going to speak, I'll just be there going, yeah, uh-huh. Okay.
If I may just point out that I have a meeting today by telephone with the attorneys, going over some logistics on it.
Very good.
And also, I've been in regular contact with the chairman's office over there, John Manning. Know him from my past life in the Cape, and this, I did indicate to him that even though that there was an attorney general's opinion, it is one lawyer's opinion, as well as the fact that there's already been a court ruling at the District Court of Appeals on this, so we're not sure why the attorney general was even saying anything. So they understand that, and that's why it's on the 24th, to give staff direction as to what to do on the 24th.
That's terrific. And even though all that has come up, I think we should be still supportive of a referendum. I'm sending alerts about fertilizer every now and again to our city clerk, and maybe some other issues that are coming up through the Florida League of Cities. I hope that council will, if they feel so compelled, to contact your representatives. And, you know, folks in TV land or in the audience here, if you see an issue that's really important to you, and that appears to be important to our city, it's reported in the press, please call our representatives. That's Trudy Williams, Representative, House Representative Trudy Williams, our State Senator Benequisto, and State Senator Garrett Richter. Fertilizer's one of them, they're trying to take away our home rule, so that's coming up pretty quick, please call about that. And then the last is, I've been in communication with some people around the YMCA, and it looks like we might have some very positive news soon. So, very good. And that's about it, sir, and I thank you.
Thank you. Steve?
Sure.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. I had a meeting, I think it was about two weeks ago, with the folks from the Benita Beach Club regarding beach renourishment, and as you can imagine, it was kind of lively, and they have a lot of concerns regarding that, and I shared those concerns with them. And I forwarded an email to the city manager, and when it comes time for budget, we need to talk about this very seriously, so that's that part. About two months ago, many of you may have read in the news press, an article about a 100% disabled veteran, whose BSU bills had amounted to around $1,200, $1,400. It is now up to $1,600. As a district commander, I had the opportunity to go to the state headquarters and lobby for this gentleman, which I did, and see if there was a way that we could help, because there is emergency funds. They took it on, they were willing to help, but after thorough investigation, this gentleman has not been in Benita Springs for two years, and he shared the room with someone else, and that person has abandoned the place. And I just want to let you know that although the American Legion is all for veterans, there are certain criteria that have to be met, and he did not meet those criteria. And I just, for the folks out there that want to blame BSU, that they're terrible and all that, if the American Legion is saying, and I don't want to go into any details, if the American Legion is saying that he does not meet the criteria, then they aired, they supported BSU.
Good enough. Good for you.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else?
Oh, that's it, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. This past Saturday night was to be the stargazing event at the Benita Nature Place, and we received a phone call about 5:00 from the astronomers, saying, "I think we need to cancel." It's going to be too, it was cold, and everyone thought, "Oh, are we canceling because it's cold?", but no, it was cloudy. And I had the opportunity to stand at the gate, to catch those folks that we couldn't get by phone, to say that we were going to postpone it till the 28th. And as they drove up, they kept saying, "But I can see the stars, it's clear, it's clear." And I said, "Well, she said it's going to be cloudy, what can I say?" Well, I stayed there till 7:15, figuring I'll catch the late stragglers that were coming, and by 7:15, she was right on the ball. It had clouded over, you couldn't even see Venus anymore at that point, so for those of you who came out and thought it was clear, she, it wasn't, it clouded up. So we're going to try again on the 28th. So tickets are still available, they still have a few out there at Parks and Recreation and the First Community Bank to get to this event, and hopefully, those who had already purchased tickets will be able to make it, and of course, those tickets will be honored. This Saturday, the city, our Tree Advisory Committee, and the Friends of the Benita Nature Place are all hosting our Arbor Earth Day. Our very good friends at the Department of Forestry will be giving out baby trees, because it's very important to our community that we all do our part in planting trees, so that's really a fun part of it. We will have many environmentally-minded vendors there with a lot of good information, and it's from 10 to 2. It's a free event, so please come out and support everyone with that. Very, very importantly, I do want to make sure that the residents of District 2 know that their polling place has changed. Or four years ago, it was at Community Hall, two years ago, it was moved to the YMCA building, and now, this year, it will be at the fire station on Benita Grand. So those of you, that is where you need to go on January 31st, between 7:00 and 7:00, to place your votes, and that is just really important. I don't want to see people of District 2 driving all over the community going, "Where do I vote?!" So it is at the fire station. And early voting starts this Saturday, so those of you who don't want to wait, and you're just chomping at the bit to cast your vote, get out there, and you can do that. And they go to the same place as they did every year before. Exactly. That place has not changed. Right up on Old 41. That has not changed. The Historical Society Speaker Series is continuing, and Friday, February 3rd, at 7:00, at the Lions Club Hall, actor Chas Mina is going to arrive there as Spanish Admiral Pedro Menendez, and take everyone a little trip back in time. That should be really, really fun and a great event. And also, we just approved our cosponsorship with the Historical Society for the Old Fashioned Fish Fry, and that will be at the Lyles Historic Plaza on Sunday, February 12th, from noon to 2:00, and the Artist Cottages will be open, and that should be a good event. Any information needed on that, they can contact the Historical Society. And the Lions Club is cosponsoring that, too. Very good. Win-win for everyone.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Steve?
Yeah, a couple of things. Number one, thanks to the, my city fellow city council people and city staff for Government Day. We had 25 students who came and shadowed each of you. The report back from the high school is, we were able to bring life to government books, so I appreciate that help, thank you. A lot of good kids. I'm very comfortable, when I saw them sit up here at the dais and down there at the professional roles, that this city's in good hands in the next 25 years, so it's great. The second thing is, we get people in the audience periodically who come for issues, and we'd love to have you anytime, but now and then, we get new folks, like Debbie Harrop, who's been here six or seven, maybe a year now, comes to meetings, thank you. And we have a new person, Mike Pace, I met this morning, and Mike, we're a small town, so this is okay if we do this, so say hello to our citizens. And third, John, I've been friends with you for 20 years, if I knew you cleared up so nicely, sitting in that chair.
(laughing)
I know you would have gotten a haircut if you'd known this a little sooner, but congratulations on a good job.
(laughing) I got one last Thursday, just for the record.
That's crazy. No, that's crazy.
Looks great, John.
Okay, one more, I'll burst like that and timeout for you, so. Okay, I think the only thing I can report is, last Tuesday, I believe, the Benita Springs Astroeconomic Development Council had their ribbon cutting, and it was an exciting event. There was a long, relatively long presentation that really brought the, probably 75 people that were there up to speed, and I've encouraged Christine at the chamber and Carl here, that that ought to be, that that ought to be on a city council agenda as a presentation, because there's a lot that they're working on, a lot they have worked on, and I think they, frankly, they've spent more time getting their work done and less time on PR, and so it's about time that the rest, that all of us hear what a great job they're doing. I think it's a wonderful effort, and I'm so proud of what everybody's doing, and the amount of volunteer effort that has been put into that, as well as the financial investment. That's all I have. So at this point, we come to public comment, and this public comment is for anything that you have on your mind that's fit to share in public.
Yes, Rick Steinmeier. I have in my hand a card. Does anybody know what this card is?
The library card.
Library card.
How many people own a library card? Really? Okay, that's good. I haven't seen any of you there, I just wonder why, if you had library cards.
I'm there all the time.
Okay, because it's awfully crowded right now. And, you know, I feel, I don't feel like tearing down this library and hoping Lee County builds it back up. There's got to be a better option than that. My question, the procedure here is to vote on something that's not on the agenda. I can't, nobody seems to care, except for Councilwoman Martha Simons, I don't think it's right, it's just, you guys are the boss, and you think you're doing things right, but I don't think that's right. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm sensitive.
Diane Fresin, Benita Beach Club. I noticed on the city finances, that I believe that Carl's going to be covering, that there, it shows that there was a $29,000 reserve for beach renourishment or preservation that disappeared between 2010 and 2011, and I know we've talked about this at the last meeting, I just would like to request that this council and management puts a permanent line item for beach renourishment, both now and in the future, in the budget, and it is used specifically and exclusively for beach renourishment, and not moved anywhere around the general fund in the future. Thank you.
Thanks, Diane.
Good morning, Kathy McGrath, for the record. I am on the board and secretary of the Friends of the Benita Nature Place, and I want to add to Councilwoman Janet Martin's comments about our planned stargazing event this past Saturday night. We had one a year ago, it was awesome, and Linda Jacobson from Calusa Sky Tours does a great job. But unfortunately, Mother Nature did not cooperate, and we really apologize, we're sorry for the inconvenience. And if there is anyone, first of all, as Janet mentioned, the tickets will be good for the 28th, but if anyone purchased a ticket and will not be able to make it on the 28th, we'll be glad to, I'm sure, refund your money. So folks, try and come, because it's really a nice event. And also, try and come on Saturday, we should have beautiful weather Saturday for our Earth Arbor Day. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good morning, Councilman Allen Glazier, Benita Springs. Also the vice chairman of the Historic Preservation Board, I appreciate your support in our matters. One thing that's really concerned me, I'm not exactly sure how long we've been going, I think it's about six years or so, but we've been having some progress on a demolition delay ordinance, as far as crafting that and getting that into implementation, and I feel like we're not moving forward fast enough on this, basically because of some things having to do with staff, and I might be wrong about that, but I've asked that it be put back on the agenda for our next meeting, and any support that we could get from you all. Like to see this come into play, give us a tool that we could save some older structures, that we've lost too many already, and we, as a city, have not been forthcoming enough to take care of these properties, to keep what we have. I, for one, do not want to see five-story buildings, two blocks off Old 41 and down through Felts, so I appreciate. I had a few items, Martha brought up one thing that made me think about, that was outside of these, but I, for one, believe that we've had enough votes here in the state, as far as gambling is concerned, and do not support slot machines in Benita Springs, so I'm not exactly sure what you all stance on, and what you brought up was what I wanted. Another thing, I support what I, and some other people call the spirit of the charter in Benita. I know things have been changed, but do not appreciate the change of the term limits, and believe we need to reconsider this. We need to bring in new blood, not that some of us couldn't step forward, but other people need to be able to allow to run for city office, and do not appreciate what I consider to be a flagrant abuse of our charter, and what we have as far as being able to allow people to run for office, and at this point, maybe to be able to have one person be in there for 16 years. I appreciate that service, but do not believe that that was what the spirit of the charter was. Then, access to track side and the sign ordinance here, as far as the sign on Imperial and Benita Beach Road, that, to me, I think it should be historic. I know it's not one of our designated historic sites, as far as the cemetery's concerned.
Allen, the red light went off. Go ahead and take another minute.
I appreciate it.
I know you have one more thing to talk about.
Yeah, that was, I just, we're talking now about Wonder Garden signs being transferred over to this use, to be able to allow, like the classic title sign was, that that sign was brought in, and as the one on the corner of Imperial and Benita Beach Road, and to me, I drive by there every day, and it's just ugly. My dad's buried there, my mother-in-law's buried there, and a lot of people from the town over the years, and I hate looking at that, and I think we just need to not play ball with these people anymore. I don't know how we can do it, but if that's the way they want to be about it with the county, we need to find some way to say, "Okay, we're not going to go along with this anymore." Thank you.
Thanks, Allen. Anyone else?
Linda Snyder, Seascape. First of all, I'd like to thank Councilwoman Simons for bringing up the shark issue. Not too many years ago, there was a very bad attack. A gentleman from England, who was staying at Dolphin Way, received some severe injuries from a shark attack there on the beach, and since then...
And since then, chumming and shark fishing continues to grow in the area. And adjacent where swimmers and children are in the water. So, we would certainly appreciate attention to some type of legislation prohibiting shark fishing in the area. I would also request that, when the city budget is done, that funds are looked at for this and future beach re-nourishments for well-maintained, healthy beaches, because these beaches are a prime and very important facet of the overall economy for the city of Benita Springs. And so, we would appreciate your interest in that area. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay. We'll get on to the city attorney's report. That would be Audrey.
And I have no report today. My item is on the city manager item.
Sweet. Okay. City manager report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As usual, we are presenting the monthly financial report as well as the projects report. We stand ready for any questions you might have.
Questions?
Carl, under the Benita Springs soccer complex, I noticed the expenses so far for the first two months, it's 21.6% of the budget. Is there something that's going to continue in that same vein in terms of budget? Should we be budgeting more money for that particular area? I don't know the answer to that.
Hello, Lisa Pace, Finance Director, for the record. A lot of times, I'm not sure with this particular item, and we'll be sure to get with the appropriate staff and see what is going on with this. Thank you for asking about that. But I do know a lot of times with the soccer fields or the other fields, there's some seasonality with respect to the timing of the different repair and maintenance or whatnot. But we will make sure we get back to you on that.
Okay. Thank you.
And if you all, don't mind, if Carl doesn't mind, I would like to respond to the monitoring for beach. I wanted to apologize. You may have noticed a new note in our financial report about our conversion, our requirement to convert based upon a governmental accounting standards board number 54. Y'all have been, had a lot of technical data today, so not going to go into that. But we made a conversion in the presentation of our funds that we have set aside. So, I wanted to apologize, because staff actually did not classify the beach preservation monies. Those are still there. Your next report, you will see them. Those are actually monies that we were refunded back from Lee County. The last re-nourishment project that we did, we were required by Lee County, or in a local agreement, to go ahead and pay them for the monitoring that's required by the state and federal funds that we receive. So, we advanced them the money for the monitoring. They closed that bank account and sent that money back to us, I don't know, a year or two ago. And we do have that money set aside, and we are just paying for monitoring. So, I did want to apologize to that lady that was in our conversion to our new standard. We left that out, but we'll make sure we put it on y'all's next account. Next report.
Thank you, Lisa.
But again, those funds were directed and for specifically to be used as dollars to cover the state required monitoring. Has nothing to do with the actual construction dollars, which are also in the budget in a separate area.
Okay. Any other questions about the financial reports? Onto the project reports, report. Questions?
I just have a question about the Shangri-La, about Shangri-La Road. By the way, they're very interested in Shangri-La going through and Imperial Harbor. They all wanted to make sure that that was happening. So, ye team, I could report, yes, it is. But here it says preliminary discussions with RV Park and three owners west of Old 41 are scheduled for the coming month. Why do we need to have owners west of Old 41 for Shangri-La? Might be a dumb question, but one I wanted to know. John seems to know something.
Yeah, I believe that what he's referring to there is the drainage portion of that project, a different phase. It's not the actual road construction, but it's part of the drainage infrastructure that's going to be used for the road, which would be west of Old 41.
Oh, really?
On those properties, yes.
Oh.
We've broken up those into different phases.
But that'd be west of Old 41, like north of the TIB Bank?
It's west of Old 41, near the FPL facility.
Okay, so, south of the, south of the post office.
Right.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay. Other questions about the projects list? Okay. Thank you, Carl, on that.
Okay, next item is, and I think Audrey and I will probably tag-team this. I'd like to start, if you don't mind. We are presenting today a revised contract with CH2M Hill to provide community development services to the city. As the council will recall, there's been some concerns expressed in council meetings in the past, that while our employees have gone without increases for some number of years now, and given the economy and whatever, there's a concern about the business deal that the city made with regards, with this corporation to provide these services, and whether or not there was some other way to either look at alternatives or come up with a better deal with CH2M Hill. We approached the corporation a couple of months ago, and we simply asked the question, is there an opportunity to amend this contract, not just in terms of the dollar amount that we're paying, but also to, and ask them to step up as a partner in that, but also to take a look at some other terms that we probably needed to get cleaned up from past years anyway. I'm pleased to tell you that CH2M Hill responded in a very positive and professional way, that we entered into new negotiations on this contract and very amicably. We all sat in a room and really talked about the ways to reach our goals and meet our goals for the city, as well as to make sure that we were being fair to the private sector corporation we're talking about here. What we have before the council today is an amended agreement that will, first off, save the city $200,000 a year for each year the contract remains in place. And that's beginning this year. So, it's very clear that even though that $200,000 is annualized, they're very clear that by September 30th of 2012, we want to have saved $200,000 in this fiscal year as well, in the starting year. Also, there was concerns about the termination clauses, that if we were to terminate for convenience, in other words, basically just say, we're going to go do something else, thank you very much, that it would cost us $400,000 at minimum to get out of the contract. We've now negotiated, along with the $200,000 savings, an extension to this contract of two years to 2015, and also to reduce those termination numbers. Starting with this year, it drops from $400,000 to $200,000. Next year, it'd be $100,000. The year after that, $50,000. And then, the final year, $25,000. There was also a provision in the contract that we would have to buy out their leases. So, for example, if they're leasing vehicles and they're using them on a regular basis, that we were going to have to take those vehicles. We'd no longer, under this arrangement, do we have to take those leases on. Also, in the event the city terminates, not only would the termination amounts kick in that I just mentioned, but also that the corporation would have an opportunity to respond to the alternative we were looking at, and also be considered a local vendor should they wanted to do that. So, we're very pleased with this. I will tell you, there are three issues that remain unresolved, that both CH2M Hill and the city agree need to get discussed and further resolved. Those issues are putting in place performance measures, so we have levels of service, so we can compare ourselves against our competitors, which may be other cities and counties in the state of Florida. And they're willing to do that. We just need to talk some more about what those will be. The second thing is the 3% escalator in the contract. We both agree that there needs to be a change to that, and they're willing to talk about that. All we need to do, and we think we're close on that one, we think all we need to do is finalize some wording. And the third thing is a different way to handle the building fees. That one will probably be the more complicated of the three to try to get resolved. We could have waited to get all that resolved, but I wanted us to start saving money right away, and that's why we're bringing the amended contract to you now for a vote today. And with the understanding that the other three items will come back to you within the next 120 days, and we'll have it all wrapped up. Staff is very pleased with the outcome here. We are recommending approval. Thank you. Audrey?
I think Carl went over it, but there are additional terms. They are outlined in the January 10 memorandum. That accompanies the green sheet, so that you have an executive summary. As Carl pointed out, there are three issues, which is on the third page of the memorandum. That'll be the second phase of the negotiation. In this particular matter, CH2M Hill shipped their attorney down, so we were able to work together on a lot of the document changes. So, there were some other changes that probably are not very interesting to you, but things that were to make it a better contract. So, it's a codified contract, rather than in the past, where you've received one or two-page amendment documents. This has all the language in there, so we tried to be very thorough, so that the document would align with other parts of the document. Now, with that being said, we will be going into the second phase, once this is approved, with those changes. And those will probably be done the old-fashioned way of just a regular amendment. But this way, everything was codified into a document, the prior amendments, making it easier reading.
And I just want to say, and I was remiss in not saying it right off the bat, I do want to thank the staff involved in this, John Gucciardo, Arlene, Sheehan was involved in this, and of course, the city attorney's office, who put the finishing touches on the wording. That was very important. And Lisa as well. Yes, absolutely. Sorry, Lisa Pace.
Question, comments?
She's still smiling. Okay.
Questions, comments from anyone?
So moved?
No.
Got a question.
Question.
Are these negotiated points dependent on a two-year extension?
Yes. They were not willing to come forward with a decrease in the fees that were being paid without a two-year extension. I will call your attention, though, that should the council wish to terminate this agreement at any time, you still have that option.
But it would cost us $400,000.
No.
Modified.
That's been modified. This year, it would only cost you $200,000. Next year, it would be only $100,000. The year after that, $50,000. The year after that, $25,000.
I'd like to take out that word you used, "only," $200,000 and "only $100,000." That's a lot of change.
Compared to $400,000.
I know, and I don't mean to criticize you on that. It's just that, you know, that's only a lot of money to me.
And that's, that's just that for 12.4, there's other closeout fees that would be incidental, regardless of what service you were using.
Well, I really appreciate what you all have done, and this, my vote is not going to be reflecting anything about what the staff at CH2M Hill has done for us on the city. But, golly, I wish we had negotiated some of this stuff when we brought them on. I am not going to be voting in favor of this because of the two-year extension. I think we could probably just save a lot of money, just bring them on board. But we're not going to get that, you know, benefit of the buyout being cheaper. I, you know, I'm just conflicted about that. And I would just prefer to, like I said, have them on board. I think they do a good job, but I'm just not happy with the contract. Although, I think you did a good job getting it, going in the right direction. I appreciate that very much, Carl and Audrey and John, and, you know, your folks over there at CH2M Hill. I think we're going in the right direction, but we should have been in this direction five years ago. We're still not there yet. And I don't want to approve the contract. I like, you know, I am happy to know that you'll continue to work on it for the next 120 days, but I think there's got to be even more work than what we're talking about. So, thanks.
Anybody else?
That sounds a little jumbled, but I don't want my vote to reflect that I think that it's okay what, you know, all the negotiations are going. I think we need more. So, thanks.
I better say something now. I'd like to thank the staff, especially Carl and Audrey and the lady in the back, Arlene. This is a, a well-thought-out plan to help the city from all the staff, and I think it should be, they should be commended for what they've done, because the art of negotiation is always unknown how it's going to come out, but I think you did an excellent job. Thank you.
Anybody else?
I concur also with you, Bill, and Martha. I don't think Carl meant only in a, in a negative sense.
No, 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 no.
But you know what? That's a 50% reduction. I think it's fantastic. Thanks.
Anybody else? Giving, given that, this has been near and dear to my heart. I've complained sort of bitterly every budget year about, about the dollars associated with this contract, not so much the performance. And so, I would very much like to make this motion to approve the staff recommendation regarding the contract.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Bill.
Pardon me, just for discussion purposes?
Sure.
I thought we're asking staff to go out for 120 days and come back to us with a new contract, a new contract at that time, that there's still some talking point, there's still some points of negotiation. Am I incorrect? Or are we, we're just not, that's going to be an impasse. We're not going to get past that.
No, at this point, what we did is, we agreed at this point to go with the points that we, and that's what's identified in the memorandum attached to the green sheet, going with the points. And I think there's about 20 points there, recognizing there are still some issues where the contract needs amendments. One is how to deal with building fees. That's a very big issue. The other, of course, is the baseline or the escalator clause compensation formula. And the third one is, we, when we entered into the contract, when the city entered into the contract, there was performance metrics-type system. It did not necessarily work out as the best way to do analysis. So, there is an Exhibit E that is proposed. There's an actual attachment of an Exhibit E of what is planned in it. And that is setting up a system where the city manager and the project manager figure out service delivery, how to make sure we work most effectively.
So, we're asking for a two-year extension, which go to 2015. The contract will be over in 2013, and basically, what we're doing is giving away our hand in a contract negotiation for the next 120 days if we agree to a two-year extension. And that's kind of the way I see that.
You're also getting $200,000 immediately.
If we just wait and go through the 120 days, because, you know, the whole thing is dependent upon the two-year extension, in my opinion. And if we go, okay, we're going to go with a two-year extension right now, then what do we have to negotiate?
I think at that point, you have to also realize you are getting many additional services. You are also getting
Sure.
the performance metrics you are getting, so that there's an automatic reduction for this fiscal year. So, Lisa will be cutting smaller checks the minute you approve this. There is some language in there allowing them the ability to match any proposal, you know, to have continuity.
Well, you know, I would just prefer if we had a motion not to approve the two-year extension at this time, and to ask staff to please just, you know, continue to work with them on this. And because, you know, what do you have left to negotiate with if you're saying, okay, two-year extension's fine today?
You can still terminate at any time.
But terminating at any time will require us to pay $200,000.
This year. That's correct.
Yeah. I'm not willing to pay $200,000. I'm still, I'm still willing to talk.
Rather pay $400,000?
Well, yeah, because if you don't change it, it's going to be
Are they going to withdraw the $400,000? I don't think so. They want their contract extended for two years.
And I will say that termination fee reduces in each year. There's a gradual reduction to where it's zeroed out, and it does not include that two years.
Martha, for
Point well taken.
Yeah. Martha, my thought on this is, we're, and I think this is the heart and part and parcel of the staff's recommendation, is we need to take that $200,000 savings while it's on the table, and the other improvements, and the cutting by 50% of that $400,000 termination fee, which, which has maddened me for four years, and it does you too. Cutting that in half is halfway, is halfway to zero. And I don't think we need to, again, as Bill said, negotiations and art, and it would be very easy to sort of open this negotiation back up and end up with everybody walking away from the table mad and stuck with what we have, which is a $400,000 termination fee, and also paying almost a half million dollars in the next two years, more than as what on the table right now. And I think that's, that's a chance not worth taking, in my opinion.
Well, if the contract is up, if, John, if the contract is up in 2013, we don't pay anything. Is that not correct?
No, there's still transitional costs upon departure, which is, in the contract, and I sent a memorandum, I believe, to either Carl, I know council was copied on that last year, where I went down to the nitty-gritty, each different software agreement, the vehicle licenses, which are going to change.
Sure. And that totals to how much, about?
I didn't do the math.
Okay, but that's going to be the same thing in 2015 as well, that we would still have transitional costs.
Right. This, this amendments reduce some of the transitional costs.
Yeah. You know, I just wonder, what are we using for leverage? You know, you throw in that hot water heater, get rid of You know, you throw in that hot water heater, get rid of that permit. That'd be one move in the right direction. Nobody else has that hot water heater permit on the building side, but what leverage when you get to negotiate building fees, which our citizens pay? I mean, we pay, they're paying taxes to us. And I'm not here to criticize staff because you did do an awesome job, and I'm not here to criticize CH2M Hill. I'm just saying, I'm here for the city's part, John, you know, to make sure that we get the best deal we can. I don't know that we did that upfront back, but we couldn't foresee the future so much, you know? Of course, I didn't vote for it then either, but what leverage are we going to have when we get to the building fee portion to help to reduce some of those costs?
May I?
I know that we, we will have to pay some of those costs. We reduce the cost. I'm not sure that's true because, you know, we don't have, on the comp plan amendment zoning side, it's proprietary information what their profit is. So we really don't know what the cost is for the profit.
But you approved the building permit fees. Now, once the proposed change is to go to a lump sum where we pay them, it does shift the risk to the city. The city has to make sure it charges enough so it keeps the city whole for that department. But when you make that shift, if you do not want a water heater permit requirement or freebie permits for certain types of permits where some permits subsidize other permits. Yeah, solar might be an example where you want to provide incentives. That's something that city council can make those calls much easier because it's a bottom line that you'll be subsidizing.
But in that case, they'll still be charging us for those, for those services. They'll charge the city for that service. Sorry to get, get to this, I'm sorry, guys.
But there'll be a lump sum with it at risk, city at risk.
Audrey, they will still be charging us for that. If we had in-house staff, we wouldn't get a charge back. It would, it would cost something for them to do. So my point is, is what works better by 2013, ending the relationship, doing those transition costs, which is going to cost something, bring them on board. They're all great. Or to 2015 where we're still being charged back for what staff could have already, you know, if they were already staff, wouldn't cost us as much. So, I mean, it's a toss-up, and I just prefer to be careful. And I'm sorry, I can't vote for it right now.
I understand. I'd like to talk to you about some of the staffing issues with, with the city manager at a different time, but-
Yeah, I saw that comp, I saw the compensation study we just did and it had a preliminary.
No, it's a different issue.
Okay.
I'll be happy to talk with you and the city manager.
Anyone else?
Love that, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments? Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve staff recommendation. Roll call, please.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakton?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Sorry, no.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Now, Mr. Mayor, we have a direction from, from council at this point to still be going out and looking at alternatives with regards to the service model that we have here with regards to CH2M Hill and whether there's others we should be doing that. Just looking, I guess, at this point in time for reiteration of that direction or if the council has different feelings given the contract that's been presented.
I believe a few months ago, that was my suggestion, so let me start off on that, and then we can, everybody else can chime in. My suggestion was to do that, but that was as much leverage as it was, much more leverage than it was dissatisfaction. And frankly, it sort of sounds like it worked. I, I'm going to be gone when I think this question should come up, but I would say probably 18 to 24 months before the end of this negotiated term, we ought to be having the same question, doing some investigation and either doing an RFP or negotiating a further extension. But I don't think, I don't think you need to continue beating the bushes now, having extended it by two years. That's one opinion. Anybody else?
I second that.
We're agreeing too much, Bill. Anybody else?
So consensus that at this point?
That's consensus. That's, Martha, I think your view might be a bit contrary on that, but that's-
Whatever. You know, majority rules. So, hey, check out the hot water heater on the building permit thing. That's all I want to look.
I've already sent an email on that.
I saw that.
I hear you. We're good.
It's a point of consternation for many people in the city.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, and staff, well done on that. You've saved us a bunch of money.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Approval of minutes?
So moved?
Motion second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Martin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Slakton?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Spear?
Aye.
Councilwoman Simons?
Aye.
Councilman Longheart?
Aye.
Councilman McIntosh?
Aye.
Public comment.
Deb Harrop for the Benita Springs Historical Society. We just, Pat Matic had to leave, but we wanted to express our appreciation to the Lions Club. They are a cosponsor of the fish fry. They're actually providing the fish and hush puppies, which is great. And we'd also like to thank the Lions Club for letting us use their center, the Lions Center on Pennsylvania Avenue, for our speaker series. And to suggest to anybody in the community, if you've been to the speaker series in the past and had to sit on a table or stand in the back of the room, life is totally different now, thanks to the Lions Club. So thank you very much.
Belvedon Lions Club. Anybody else?
Alan Glaser again.
Thanks, Alan.
I apologize earlier on the access to Trackside. What I meant by that was having to do with the signs that Everglades Wonder Gardens are talking about, including that into this where we're going to have all these signs up and down Old 41 and other places. One of the main signs that I see that that could affect would be the one right at Trackside. And it's, it's too bad that we can't have access to that corner there to where our business could be viable. I think they've been doing a good job, and hopefully they'll be able to stay there. But I hate to see that as what I consider to be a landmark. A lot of people maybe don't like the looks of an old Dairy Queen, but that, I think it's quaint. Also, the water heater situation, also exterior door installs for front doors. I run into this every day in my business. Both of those are really a negative as far as the amount of business that, that we can offer local businesses because lots of times, that's the breaking point, and people just walk away from that. So I appreciate that. And John, I appreciate your service, and I just, I really enjoyed this meeting today. And that, actually, that you were there and somebody else wasn't here, and I think it really went along really well. So I'm going to miss you.
Thank you, I guess, Alan.
That's great.
That's great.
Okay, Rick Steimer.
Rick, 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 let me start over for you. Okay. I was just, I just, you just had the rest of Alan's green. I wanted to give you your three minutes.
As far as the water, hot water heater now, the code is different than it used to be. You can't have just a pigtail where you plug it into the outlet. You have to have it hardwired, which I would certainly hope you get an electrician that knows how to do that. So therefore, the permit should be required so that it's wired properly. That's what we have permits for, is to make sure the job gets done properly and you don't burn the house down. So, thank you.
Thanks, Rick. Anyone else? Last chance? Anyone else? Meeting adjourned.
Good job, John.